Welcome, everybody. Wow, it's time for three people to the mat. I didn't know that would happen. Alrighty, round in order. Kathy DeGolgo.
Albert.
Here.
Cooper.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Lattman.
Here.
Polly.
Here.
Janelli.
Here.
Katrina.
Here.
And Professor.
Here.
And Ambassador. And Zola.
Here. Thanks.
I'm here today. President tomorrow.
Oh my God. Welcome to the Board of Education. It's so serious. Alrighty, before I do any recognitions, I have to, we have to wave hello to Lenny and to Deb, who could not be here. First of all. Hi guys.
Hey.
Okay, folks, very good to acknowledge, we can move on. Recognitions. There she is. There she is. Alexandra Benfrode-Gast, who was selected for the 2016 United States Senate Youth Program.
So, I think, I don't know if I mentioned any of this to you over the past couple months, but last year I had the opportunity to serve as the US Senate page, and I worked on the floor of the US Senate for five months. This past summer, I went to Girls Nation, which is another phenomenal political program that I'd love to tell you guys more about sometime. And then I applied for this, and they select two delegates from every state to go to EAC. We do some of the things, we meet with the president, we meet with Supreme Court justices, we go back to the US Senate, we meet with our representatives there, and they have a lot of phenomenal guest speakers. I think last year, they met, a lot of delegates met, the world's youngest female billionaires. So they have like kind of speakers like that to come in and they talk to us about public service.
How old was she?
She was, oh, I'm not sure. I was in, I only saw it online, so.
How's your all?
Yeah, so last week, I had an interview, and that actually turned out to be less of an interview, more of an extemporaneous speaking contest, but it went very well, so. I'm very fortunate.
Very, very proud of you. Alrighty, our next recognition is to teen and tenured teachers. Alright, so I need an explanation, and I'm going to, who's going to read this whole thing, but Sal can be more succinct than I, than this, right?
We'll start with Sue Hesu, she's been running this program.
Oh, alright. Yeah, Cochrane, and I'm going to refer to Pam. Okay, yeah, want to talk to us about that story?
Sure.
Pam, you need to get to the mic, please. We don't have many, so.
We can't talk into the mic at that point, so.
So, TEA is a program sent by the State Department of Education. That many teachers go through, it takes two years, they, they have mentoring as part of the program. They write four reflection papers that they submit to the state for review, and they also participate in a conversation around professional ethics and responsibilities. And at the end of that period, in their successful papers, they graduate from the TEA program, and it causes them to be eligible to move up the certificate, provisional certificate of the certification.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you, I'm sorry, to repeat that last part, if all questions were what?
A provisional teaching certificate, so the next level certification.
Okay, let's go. Alrighty, are all the names I have here, and I have read all the names, yes?
Oh, no, never mind, keep going.
What were you going to say?
No, I'm one of the teachers on the list, yeah.
You're right, that's what I was going to say. Anyone that's here on the list, I, hold on, we have some, and see if you're one of them. Where is it? The list. Okay. Vincent's here?
No, Vincent's not here.
Oh my God, that's a terrible. So, are there any of the teachers here that we're speaking of now? One, one, two, three. Could you just hit up and hand it to me?
My name is Maria Crafty, I'm one of the health and physical educators here at Westside with Frank.
Oh, good, thank you. And was there someone else that I didn't see? We thought there were two, okay, there was only one. If you were counting, the elderly just ran the camera. Alright, now, what's the next piece of stuff?
In Connecticut, which is one of the most arduous states to become tenured in, it's a forty-month process, as you heard here, there's, you need to go through a team in order to continue down the track of becoming a tenured teacher. When folks come in and we have our induction, Kim, Bill, myself, Joe, Debbie, we talk with the new faculty, and it is quite a commitment, and choosing them is not easy. They have to go through a process, many of them do not only the observations in the class, but then we have one or two or three interviews at times. And so, just getting by that process into us is quite an accomplishment. And then, the sustainability. I think urban settings are most difficult for a new teacher, or just a teacher new coming to us from a different setting, and I'm real proud of the folks that have become tenured here. We're saying we're investing in you. If you would think about all of the PD that we do, I know sometimes it's tough for you to do, but it is quite costly, and the board has been very supportive of us putting that money into you and your development. We don't expect you to be great teachers when you start, when you get down that path, and you've got our support in saying, we're going to invest in you, because you're really someone that we want to work with our students here for the future. So, we go up, we start a tradition and have folks come when they receive tenure. So we hope for next year, when we have it in Palm Beach, we'll get more. It won't be rainstorming, but it truly is an honor. It's an honor for us to say congratulations today, so if you could just please stand so briefly and say thank you, those of you that are here. Are there any good ones?
Okay, so, before we sit down, I can tell which one Vincent is. Which one is Michelle? Hi, Michelle, I can't, not even know who that is.
There we go.
Oh, that was easy. There we go. And there she is.
There she is.
No, I'm sorry. And thanks for coming.
Family lock.
Okay, okay, Natalie, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. This reception was for you all, so I hope you all had goodies.
Did we miss anyone else?
Is there anybody else that's part of this contingent?
Any spouses, there are mom and dads, I don't want to say.
I see, that's what I was looking forward, I thought Casey Duffy would be here, and I'm, he'd be here, and I'm just a generation. Didn't have it. Really, congratulations, thank you, and thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. The Board welcomes public participation. We have people signed up. The Board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments, school operations, and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expressions of personal complaints or predatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students, or against any person connected with the national public space whatsoever. I have a list of people, and some of them are already stood up. Oh, I see, okay. Kathy Snow, Kathy Snow's here. Alright, Kathy. You want to go over to, where do you get, where do you estimate? We're trying to confuse you, so it takes you longer to get there.
Do you know my topic? Little pool lottery, and I know from the last meeting, there was likely conversation about the lottery, and how, you know, the primary call, from my understanding, is more population control versus necessarily individual choice. So, now, what I'm sitting in front of you to ask is, the application itself is not clear that there are separate lotteries for Roger Park and Broadview Academy. So what I hope to see on the application for Westside Academy is that it clearly states that there are two lotteries for rural and two lotteries for STEM, and that if your child's put on a waitlist, that's the waitlist that will be on, is based on what their home school would be, which is very confusing for families to get put on the waitlist, and then, you know, if their child's number thirty in Roger Park, but a seat opens up from the Broadview side, a Broadview student will fill that seat first. So, and then, I think Ann Rose Way had asked about the STEM Academy, when it was at Roger Park, how many students were pulled from each school, and I don't know if it was clear, but my understanding is that the exam has always been fifty students from Broadview and fifty from Roger Park. It's not been an uneven split, at least after the study closing. So, you know, I don't know, she said, even when it was at Roger Park, it was always fifty, fifty from each school, so. Anyway, I guess that's what we clarified, but that's my hope, is that at least, now that you made it clear that we transparently as far as the lottery process, it's clear that.
Okay. Someone I missed, I still have, I think it was next.
So, I am going to kind of stem to what Kathy Snow said, and there's some of you up for reelection, and these people are coming on board, and voting on Tuesday, I am hoping that the Board will have consistency going forward. You said, you took away sibling policy for AIS because it was unfair to all younger students. Yet, you're putting those students in a better position, because now everyone else at school will have siblings, but the younger students will not. You are going to deconstruct that school through this rule that you passed, because you said, it's not fair. So now the middle school already has been brought up, and goes, well, it is not fair, but we're, we're going to go with older population. So, I, I, me, sitting at home watching the video, and like, so where are we going to be consistent? That's my question, so I need to vote on that, it's very important to the parents, you know, to young children, I have young children, I have somebody in middle school, and young children, it's very important to me, that there is a consistent consensus for you going forward.
Thanks, Kathy. Tamika. Edwards. Hi. Did I come to this quick?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I usually get to me eight them.
Oh, no.
Okay. Hi, my husband, sorry, take Edwards again, my husband Orlando and I are here also about a sibling preference policy. I know this isn't the first time it was introduced, but I share my specific story for my family with different members of the, 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 last night, and I also, you know, I shared my story with members of the parents at AIS as well, and felt it was necessary to share it with you as well. And there are probably five categories, I think, that impacted by a lot of this story, which I think is important for the Board to consider, just so that you kind of, so that you see how it connects to an individual family. The areas are really, you know, fragmented in parent involvement. For my husband and I, we had two sons, they were not able to be in the same school, and they were not able to be in the same school, we had to basically choose what PTO to participate in, which schools to donate money to, where to, you know, contribute athletic participation time and so forth. So we found that our efforts to schools were diluted, because we kept on having to split that up between two different schools. Another impact, which is near dear to my heart, which is my main reason for being here, was the social impact on our sons. Last year, 2014, my middle child got selected to attend AIS, my youngest son was not as fortunate to get a seat in the lottery. At the time, I found it very difficult, my youngest just could not comprehend the concept of a lottery, or the concepts of chance. He felt rejected, and that he was not good enough to attend, and he just could not understand why his brother could go and he could not go. My boys, just to point out to you, were twenty months apart, and I basically raised them as twins, they did everything together their entire life, which was the first time they were being separated from each other. And my youngest in particular became aggressive, his grades dropped, he just was pulled apart by the concept of just not being able to be with his brother, and for me, I found myself where, you know, I had a full-time job, I had to leave that job just to be there, to be with him, to support him, so he didn't have to feel conflicted, because I had to, I had to divide, divide my efforts off with him. So, you know, that was a cover of the category of strain of families for me. In terms of attrition, you know, at the point, my husband and I kind of made the decision that we would either re-attend or the academy and live it for nine years and love, but we said if our kids can't be together, and we want them to be in the same type of school, then the next option for us, as far as public options are concerned, would be to move out of Deverry. Okay? And the last school that came close to me also is when I thought of emergency evacuation procedures for, for our school system. I thought of, you know, September eleventh, you know, which is a little bit far from, from many of us, basically, I thought of the recent snowstorm in Georgia, and picking up kids, and many kids who had to be left to sleep in school, and I really thought, you know, if I had my two children, and one even, I had twenty minutes to go get both of them, how could I possibly do that as one person if there was an emergency evacuation procedure, and this brings that here? So I do, you know, humbly ask, I think you're all wonderful people, that you do support us in revisiting this decision, I respect the choice that was made, but when I think of it, you know, just from my standpoint, my husband's standpoint, and what we endured, basically, by having our kids in different schools, I certainly don't want this to have to also impact any of the families, the way it has impacted our family, and I do ask that you at least consider revisiting that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other people that would like to speak? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, I'm very sorry. Hi.
How do I reply to these representatives?
Are you from, which school?
Moore Street.
I spent, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had to hear you. Alright, you must be Heather.
Just a question, she's not, she's not representing, she's representing the FRC, not the NEA, does that make a difference?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we have representatives here, they're employee representatives. So, would you like to, Heather, would you like to speak, as long as you can?
Hello, I'm Heather Allee, the Youth Development Coordinator for the Family Resource Center at Moore Street School. I think the Board's going to, we have a few moments to speak on behalf of our director, Estelle Camacho, and the staff and at the school. So, basically, we'll overview some of the Family Resource Center provide to Moore Street School. We are there as a support system to the staff and to the families. We, I have no choice. We offer different programs to our families, which happen to be.
Can you speak also to the.
Oh, sure. We offer programs to our families, which happen to be at our school, eighty-five percent are service local incoming families. We have a parent educator in our office, Karina Chelsa, she provides home visits to families with children that are birthified, and she provides playgroups at the school, board also birthifies. Last year, she had a hundred and fifteen home visits to families, and she provided fifty-six playgroups at our school. We work very close with the staff. In order to coordinate programs for our families, we ask the staff to kind of pinpoint what they feel. We also have youth development programs, which I help coordinate. These are after-school clubs that I help coordinate for our students, because a lot of them aren't able to access, they need transportation for due costs. So all the clubs we provide after school are no cost to no students. I have a Google club, which is a computer programming club, I have a community service club, which is the FRL club, I also do creative corner, which is an arts and crafts club for fourth graders. So we try to get everything from zero to a hundred, we try to help our families in all the ways that we can. So I'm here just to say, you know, to the Board, thank you for letting me present this, and I hope if you have any questions, feel free to drop by our Family Resource Center, which is at Moore Street School.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Righty, our next is on Millridge Primary Labs. I'm Michelle, Michelle, what do you mean, I can say?
Yeah.
And Karen.
I'm actually not, I am just speaking on behalf of the teachers, Dr. Cohen wanted me to just speak a little bit about the Alliance Grant that we are going for. I represent the K-1 team, so I attend a meeting every month, and the push is for biological awareness and oral language, especially with our kindergarten students, just because it is lacking so much with five Google Homes. So we attend these conferences, and then the team, the K, the grade two and grade three team attend another one, and they went to one today, it's all about syllable work, so I just wanted me to put in a little spiel about that. They're very helpful, the team actually also comes out to us and does a thirty-minute lesson, and then we debrief, and they give us some more resources to implement into the classroom. So that was all my.
It's a wonderful, thank you.
The three-minute training makes me very nervous.
And Karen Lanery, I'm just going to share a few more things that we're doing at Millridge Primary. We are going to be holding parent meetings to try and get our parents up to speed, and get them more involved in what's going on with the K in the curriculum for the Common Core. So we'll be having Mac-focused meetings and Langart-focused meetings, just on a lighter side, just a couple of the things that we're getting ready to be doing, that we're starting to do is we're having a harvest festival this Friday night, and Millridge has been doing this for many years, the whole Millridge community, I was lucky enough to participate in that with my own children, so I'm very happy we're doing that again. We'll be having activities for the children, parents, siblings, crafts, and games, and the like, so it's a great place for them to celebrate the holiday and the time of the year, they do that. And Millridge is also involved in a book and clothing drive, so we're just starting that for the community, and we're also happy to report that we are able to use the field to do field. We've been using it for gym tests, and we're going to be using it for some, just some walking time, so it's nice, and we actually use it for patient for recess, so just to share those couple things.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Alrighty. What time is here for harvest day, Karen?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. That includes public participation. On our consent calendar, Kathy, go.
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar exhibits fifteen dash one sixty-five through fifteen dash one sixty-six as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second question.
Hi, Gladys Cooper. Any questions? Tom, Seema, Al, Amber? And Deidre Jettie, or Seem? Okay, first, pass it. Alrighty, now, is representation. Okay, correct, we did that. Recently, I was in for a representation, and that's different than others for the state council, so everybody knows, is, we have other schools, you don't know that, and we're eleven people, and it's hard for us to get to every school to find out what's going on. So for a long time, different schools come, and some teachers come, and sometimes parents come with the teachers, and they sit in the audience, and I've been here for quite some time, for years, and watching these people, and I think that that's really nice, but it's different. So I sat down in an engineering committee with a gentleman that's responsible for the annual in this area, and he said, we were talking, he said, I'm on my way, and we haven't had anybody at the meetings the last couple of times, but we're back on track. And I looked at him, and I said, and they come, why? Well, you know, to be here to represent schools. And I went, wow, do you think we can get them to tell us what goes on in the schools instead of just sitting there and not saying anything, so we could really know? Because we actually don't have the time to get to every school. So from now on, we'll be having different representation at every meeting, with the explanation of why the people are here, and what's going on in your schools. Because that harvest fair sounds fabulous, I'd like to vote, I mean, to think, I just, I know more now about those two schools than I did before. Thank you both very, very much. Yes, sir, we don't really do this.
Moore Street has one too.
I beg your pardon?
Moore Street has one too on Friday night, I'm sorry I didn't mention it.
Oh, Parks. Parks has. Tisk, tisk, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, you all have our emails, you can send us, you don't mind me sending you them, right? But please let us know, and that's what we're here for also. It's not just our business. Everybody does a great job, we just need to feel that, and not in summation, we're here for that.
I'm sorry.
Alrighty, and now it's our student representatives, and Lexi, you're the last?
I don't know.
If you'll introduce yourself, please.
I'm Sofia Capelio from Danbury High School, and the Board of Education President.
And Denny, I'm the Secretary of the O.G. Secretary.
Thank you.
So, we had a great beginning to the school year at Danbury High School. These past two weeks have gone very crazy, but went very smoothly. We had ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders take the PSATs on Wednesday, October fourteenth. Spirit Week is a great success. We had America Day, Twins Day, Character Day, Orange and Blue Day, which frightened the week of October, thirteenth and sixteenth, with spirit and enthusiasm. It's really great to see all the students coming together and fun that week, pretty impressive. We had the homecoming bands and the game. The dance was fun-filled night, which included food, music, dancing, and a photo booth, and six hundred students attended this year. We had our band jamboree this past weekend, which is an annual event where martial bands compete, and they came from all around Connecticut, New York.
So, this past Monday, in the game against Staples, the boy soccer team, were able to clinch the number one spot. to clinch the number-one spot in the FCAC Division Rankings. They were named the FCAC regular season champions, and will begin their competition for FCAC Championships this Thursday at four o'clock in Switchfield at Arlington Stadium. Our fall sports are coming to an end. This past week has been filled with senior nights, a way to honor our senior players and wish them luck in their future successes. And the college fair was this past Monday, October nineteenth. It took place at the Danbury Fair Mall, and a lot of the Danbury High School students were in attendance, so it was a great success.
So I am actually going to talk about an issue. Dr. Pasquarella asked me to take this to my most recent statewide student advisory council on education meeting, which we call SASI. I'll say that to kind of abbreviate things here. But as all of you are familiar, the statewide Board of Education recently made the decision to increase the graduation requirements for high school seniors from twenty-one to twenty-five. And as we've talked about, that would have member of delterious effects on our school district, and so I brought that to statewide student advisory council in the hopes that we could make that a target issue for this year and try to persuade statewide board from going forward with this, because there could be a number of issues, not only for our district, but for a number of others across the state. And we are currently considering it, but we have one concern that I was hoping I could bring to the board tonight. Perhaps you might have some suggestions. Last year, SASI had the opportunity to try to, we actually kind of persuaded statewide board to use the SAT as a statewide standardized test opposed to the SBA. We had a lot of say in that, bringing the student perspective forward, but that was because there was, there was a decision, that that decision was currently being made. We are able to have that kind of influence. This mandate was already passed, and so right now we're questioning what we can actually really do to dissuade the statewide board from going forward with this since the mandate has already been passed. So right now, we're looking into a couple of things. There was a committee that was formed recently, not by us, but by the statewide board, and that committee is looking into the graduation requirements for high school seniors and what they entail. The committee is designed specifically to do research in that area. So right now, we're trying to find out a little bit more about what that committee does, what kind of impact it's going to have, and what specifically it's looking for, and then if we can find some hidden opportunity, then we will go speak to that committee and bring that to student perspective. But as for right now, I don't think we can really convince the statewide board to look back on this issue, because, you know, that would be much more difficult to do. So if you have any suggestions for us on top of that committee, on top of looking into that committee, that would be a great use to me. I can try to bring that to SASI. But right now, we're kind of reaching a little bit of a dead end, unfortunately, with that.
The only I would say is that the reason why they moved it forward is that they didn't feel they had the funding.
Right.
And with the governor now, with the recissions that are going on now, I don't see how they're going to get more funding next year. So I think what I would do is I would keep touting that if you're really going to require this, and you don't want to consider these other characteristics that we think that it's not appropriate, then think about the financial part. There are schools without labs, biology labs, will be pressed into space issues, but it's all going to cost money. If they don't have the money, they need to reconsider it, if that what you want. The committee that you're talking about is an open meeting. I can tell you when they're going to meet, and you can attend, and there's a time for the audience to speak up.
Right.
And you'd be welcome to do that, so they're going to get time to do that. Because they're going to bring back the recommendation to the state board of that this year.
I can ask the council to perhaps release some kind of a comment on it. That might be helpful, and I would love to attend that if it is possible, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lexi. Okay, I'm sorry, is there someone from the ladies to speak? From the alternative center, our friends ones, not here? Okay, I just was checking, do you want to just go through the meeting with that governor or him? All right, we have a presentation.
Students, do you want to join? Come on up. Do we have that mic going?
Can we stand?
Part of it?
Absolutely.
No, no, we must say, in the chairs, there's two both.
The board's heard a lot about the Say Something Week. Basically, this is the group that's really spearheaded it all. They've organized it, they've structured it, they've done all of the publicity, they've done all the notices. They had a huge assembly last week, the governor attended, through their efforts and their leadership. That's a peer leadership course, and that's what it's designed to do, is to create opportunities for our students to exercise leadership, and they're getting really needed this now, right? Needed, don't need so much, but why don't you tell us about the program and what you're doing?
Thank you for the wonderful introduction. My name is Natalia Stravsky. This is Isabel Gostambs and Lizzy Newell. We have one more partner who unfortunately is sick, so I'm glad he's not here today because I get sick very easily. So the four of us have spearheaded the Say Something, Standing with Promise, as well as the Start with Hello campaign. The amount that we accomplished, I'm not trying to brag, but wow. We had a call to action week, which was last week, and on Monday, we had, we use social media a lot in this project. We made a statewide hashtag, hashtag CP Say Something, and on our Twitter and Instagram pages, we posted pictures of students from Danbury High School pledging their support to end violence and social isolation in schools. So Tuesday and Monday, we used the hashtag, and then on Wednesday, we had a platform where, oh my goodness, multitudes of students sign their names and pledge their support, as well as just took a picture of it and posted it, which I know with, you know, how the world is progressing, social media is everything, and we kind of use that to target a huge audience statewide. Thursday, we have the privilege of speaking with Dr. South Pasquarella, the Governor Malloy, Mayor Mark Mountain, as well as Mark Barton, who is one of the founders of Standing with Promise. And, oh, it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience. We talked about the steps to take when you see something, and we also started talking about our next initiative, which is Start with Hello, which is in January, they call it Action Week, I believe. So the Say Something Call to Action Week was last week, and the next Start with Hello Week is in January. And I am just so proud of my group, and we, oh, gosh, I have to tell you. We were also interviewed by about three news stations, and we made it live! So, you know, I thought that was an awesome way to spread the awareness, and now I'm going to hand over the mic to Isabel and Lizzy, who are spearheading the Start with Hello campaign. Thank you.
Okay, so we're working on right now the Call to Action Week for Start with Hello. And Start with Hello is a program about chronic social isolation in schools. It was originally started by a nonprofit in California, targeted at middle school students, but they expanded the program. It was originally called No One He's Alone, and the concept behind that was that students would sit with people that they didn't normally sit with to kind of encourage a broader community so that no one was sitting by themselves. And, yeah. So our purpose basically for bringing this to Danbury Public Schools was to not only end social isolation and chronic loneliness, but to spread message, and I guess have an example for the rest of the state of Connecticut. Our Call to Action Week usually includes lots of different programs and activities for grades K through twelve, like poster contests. I know it happens on the elementary level with fire safety and stuff like that. We were going to do a social isolation approach to that and encourage students to be inclusive and kind, and middle school and high school contests include radio announcements and video contests, because there is a $10,000 scholarship award for the school that raises the most awareness for its cause. So we were going to use social media to our doing again, and we probably come up with more hashtags and more opportunities for students, not only in high school, but in middle school as well, to post pictures and tweet and spread awareness.
Yeah, we're in the process of reaching out to several different districts in the state of Connecticut to really expand this project and reach out, so we're excited.
Thank you so much, and if you see something, say something.
This is the best, I have to tell everybody here, because I just feel compelled to tell everybody, I can't. This has been the best start of any meeting that I've had in the last year. Thank you very, very much for all of you, our union ladies, and I need you to go back to the lady that's taking the minutes and give her your names, if you don't mind doing that, I would appreciate it. We have everybody else's name written down, so she has that, she needs it. And just thank you, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving forward to the business part, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Only ask you, Richard, come on, go.
To the other, to the other board members, one of the ways that we can participate in this as well is to try to make arrangements, since we're all basically assigned to a specific school to attend PTO, and we're always talking about to get together with either different schools to participate in things, is to ask these students in their committee if they can lead to share their program to the individual school so that you as a rep at a specific school may be able to go to one of the PTO meetings and have them go and speak to the, and have it speak to the PTO, to the parents. The unit, the statewide PTO, that's okay, because sometimes that information doesn't filter down, and I think the local PTO's sometimes are a lot more stronger and a little better, you know, better organized. That's another thing you could do. But they'd be very willing to help you in any way to spread the word. And the nice thing is, and I appreciate this, is basically, you know, it's like a Woody Show, you're going to take the show on the road and to try to hit other districts, which is great. So Danbury gets a lot of good press and doing something that's worth while for us, and not only maybe instrumental in Danbury, but making it additional in other districts. And what I'd like to do, as I mentioned to Dr. South, is part of the Community Information Committee, is to have this as a sort of standing agenda item in that committee, so it just doesn't die for this particular year, and it's continued who's ever in charge of that committee or who's ever elected, so that we continue this. So I think it's a great way that both the board and the students work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genelli. Same way also, many comments before I rudely move on with me. Okay, seeing none, we're going. Action items, cap.
Does the Board of Education accept the September 2015 operating results analysis of the general fund in accordance with fifteen dash one sixty-seven?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ralph, head professor. Do I have any questions? Mr. Holland.
Joe, just a general comment. Where do we stand on insurance as far as insurance claim and kind of, you know, expenditure to your...
As I noted in the report, July and August claims were in line. If you remember, last July was really hot coming out of the plan change. So health insurance looks fine. Overall, as I noted, the salary counts are a little, look like there's additional excess there, but because of some of our late grants coming in, particularly our magnet school grant, we're going to see that number drop some. There's still some teachers that we have to book into those, either into those grants or out of those grants based on where they're going to come in at. Magnet School being one, Title One, both of our larger grants, one is two million, one is about 1.8 million. Overall, health special ed tuition, we're still in the process of booking those in. Some of those contracts come in late on settlements, so as of right now, there's some surplus there, but I do, that sense will draw that down. No major worrying signs yet, but September report is early days, so I'm not, but I agree with that, came fairly in line, so overall, okay.
Okay. Bob?
I'm interested in the special needs account. I know we were trying to develop something internally rather than outsourcing some of the, I was just wondering how that was going and how the line item is generally going. I know that's unpredictable, you know, what could happen in that.
Thanks to Debbie Peterson's help and myself, we've really got a handle on the special ed tutors as far as kind of getting that line where it's budgeted where it should be. As the board knows, we've cut taken a number of years ago against that line. Right now, it's actually, I believe, about $6,000 in surplus. So as of right now, I think we're in good states of special education. We did have to hire a point four occupational therapist to cover some additional overages in that area, but, I mean, overall, I think our services are in line, budget is, you know, fairly in line. But again, September report is early as far as projections, but right now, I would say, Debbie and I also had, we did put the board in Rogers Park as well, that self-contained project.
Anybody else with questions? Seeing none, tire lines, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining, objections, some of those causes?
Does the Board of Education accept the September 2015 operating results analysis of grants and projects in accordance with fifteen dash one sixty-eight?
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson.
Richard?
Joe, do you see any merit in breaking out in the item zero zero four, the Alliance Grant? They cost around 25% of the budget. Do you think that could be a separate presentation so that we have, as I understand, as to of the eight million dollars as the basic, what it's going toward?
Sure, we can easily break that. We have in years past brought that report to the full board as far as the salary breakdown. I think absolutely, so it's a $7.8 million grant, we can easily break that out, at least as a, at least an item on the next agenda. I mean, as far as change in the account, because it's mostly salary.
If you had two presentations, you had this and then the other, you had another one where earmarks were eight million dollars, a billion million dollars, it's going to see how you break it out in terms of categories, whether it be salary, programs, or stuff like that. So at least, we as board members in general, do you see how that can be...
We can, we can definitely do that. It's, obviously, once the salaries are booked in, it doesn't see a lot of change monthly in a sense of payouts. Yeah, we can certainly break that out more.
All right, I need...
Just another note for the board members too. You'll notice some of the grants are at zero, that's because they haven't been awarded yet. Those are entitlement grants, so unfortunately, we know they're coming, we know the amounts haven't been reduced, they just haven't been awarded yet because of delays at the state level.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Objections? It passes? All right, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Pasquarella.
I'm sorry. I decided not to do it.
Does the Board of Education approve the 2015-2016 school food service agreements with Head Start in accordance with fifteen dash one sixty-nine?
Second.
Second by Bob Taversa. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. All right. Now it's time for the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'll let the candidate first one, I'll say emergency preparedness.
Okay. Can I have... I'll just, yeah. Last week, it was Wednesday, Wednesday of last week. Thank you. That's the nice idea, I like that. Last week on Wednesday, we participated in a statewide safety and security event. It was a mock-up of a weathered tomato drill that was to hit town basically at nine o'clock in the morning, so it would affect schools in session, transit of children, sort of variety of issues. So Dr. South and several R team, Joe, Debbie, we had some faculty of dental nurses, Paul Grayson for psychology, we all went down into the bunker in City Hall, which was really fun. And we did a simulated exercise, and what happened was Paul Estefan was running the drill, and he would receive fight facts from several commands and up in her for a list of questions that was part of the scenario. And so for the first hour, a certain event would happen, and then there were a series of questions that were designed to test our preparedness and response, so not just from the Board of Education, but also from the city agencies, so public police, home and security were all present. And this went on for quite a few hours as we went through the scenarios. And I think, I could draw some conclusions about our state of preparedness just from watching, it's simple. I think that several years ago, the work that Michael Dorn did in the district put us in excellent stead. I felt as though, and Joe King Chin as well, we felt as though the folks that we had around the table were, they had plans, they had protocols in place, they were able to respond. So when we got to the, the district education questions, we were able to just, boom, boom, we did this, we did this, we did this. So we started from an excellent place. I think the discussion was particularly good for us because it pointed out a few things we still need to... we still need to tweak. For example, if we have all communication loss, how do we get to our own school like Pembroke to make sure that their shape, that the kids are locked down, that they're in a proper place? So we spent some time down through the city on how to harness their emergency communications, procedures, and to kind of talk through those scenarios with them. So I think it was an excellent, it was an excellent exercise. I think we still have some things to do to tweak our plan, but it will look a shape. And what happened at the end was that we talked into a conference call with the governor at the Armory, and everyone who was participating was on the call and kind of did a wrap-up. But it was a good event. You might remember, I think last year, we did a great shakeout, which was similar, it was North Quay drill. So we will take the information that we got from this particular drill and bring it back to our administrative council, along our principles, urge them to go back through the safety and security updates that they got from Michael Dorn. And we've been talking here about Armory to go through and update now, to do another tree watch among our buildings and see if changes pervade, to do another assessment because it hasn't been a few years. So on all good experiences.
And while we were there, Bill was in the district, because one of the things that we learned from Dorn, if we're all in one spot, we have to communicate in the field or back in central office, someone needs to be in charge to set the bill, stay behind, do that part. I think we are going to be challenged with communication, please, we check in our phones now, is everybody has a cell phone, and make sure that they're tuned in. We talked about the alertness, and this would happen to be on Tony, as we talked about. So I think all in all, it went very well, we worked well with the city in terms of, we did also work with the ambulance folks that were there. Little thing doesn't seem like very much, but just putting them on our alert list will gear them up to assist us, and they're able to triangulate where the issues are because of the GPS system. Then they found out our buses are also on that GPS system. So God forbid there's something with a bus or a hostage, they can follow right to that bus in that area. So, you know, we found out some things that we didn't know about each other, which was really helpful. It was a good exercise.
I think, I can just add one more point. I think the level of cooperation and the level of reach out to us from the city was tremendous. And they have continued to make themselves available to watch some of the drills that go on, you know, monthly in the schools, to provide feedback. They are just, they've gone above and beyond, I think, to not only just cooperate, but to reach out and see if there's anything else that we need or that we'd like to do with them. So they've really, they've been really good partners in the security area for us.
Good.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Richard?
Last week, we talked, last board meeting, we talked a little bit about the, talked lottery, about the lottery, and we did some checking. In conversation with Frank, with the idea of just leaving it packed the way we are is fine. Frank's vision on that was it might make it a little more accommodating to the parents, but as long as we're trying to figure out if the balance is worked and based on the proceeds, we have to leave it alone. So we drilled down on the, on the enrollment. You wanted, I asked, do you have some information, might be helpful for the board?
We did look back, about two years ago, we did the original redistricting plans, the discussion that helped out the middle schools in terms of that narrowing of the gap between the two. And as Dr. Stoddard was discussing, one of the things we did do as the board members, there was a, a vital new program that actually originally existed at Brumby, which was moved over to Rogers Park. And as part of the community projections, we do see, once the next grade comes online in West Side, we do think that gap is necessarily plausible more, probably be probably in seventies or something, which, again, if you look at the way it splits off, you tell me maybe moving 30 to 35 kids to bring them perfect balance. And we did reach out to the demography. You're never going to get to that, that level of exactness, it just doesn't exist. It's like, look at our elementary schools, and where they exist, you've got some as small as 350, you've got some as large as 600. So if you get to that level of, of exactness, really, we'll never get there. So I think, another review, once we bring the next, the eighth grade in next year, or the bowl size eight, and then review where they are. I mean, the gap right now really is fairly close, which is where Ross saw it kind of closing in as we get closer to being fully capacity here.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions, Richard? Yes, Bob, are you, yes, you have a question?
No, no, the gap is closing, that's good to hear.
Anybody else? Yes, Emily. So, the lottery update?
So then, at the last meeting, we had said, just so that I'm clear on this. So at the last meeting, I just wanted to make that clear on this. The reason for the split is to control size in both middle schools. Fifty-fifty split, right?
What, you mean split, I'm sorry, between the two buildings?
Yes.
Yes. There was a conversation before about, the goal was to try to go fifty-fifty, but we didn't achieve that. There were, Frank, when Frank went through, we started counting the kids that were in seats, there are more Rogers Park kids here in the step. As they leave and we go to parity, that's when the numbers start drawing down. So we'll get 50 more out of Rogers theoretically. Then the delta will be added to the ones back to Rogers Park. That's why the numbers are going to be that much better. So that is the theory behind it, yes.
Yeah, when the first lottery was polled here, we actually ran out of four of these seats to fill the step. No, I forget which grade, those two or three years ago, we actually exhausted that list. So in order to bring them up to 100, the list pulled up, because there was literally no one left on that list.
But that's not the case?
No, 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 we're more than that, that's not possible.
Registration tasks. I'm sorry, anybody?
Okay. So one of the things that we did, really looking closely at this year is kindergarten registration. It started with, each year, starting a couple of years ago, we tried to centralize kindergarten registration with a series of bumps. And so this year, Dr. Sal has created a registration task force that I've been sharing, and we had a first meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we're scheduled to meet again next week. And the task force consists of representatives from just regular registration, so elementary school principals, from ELL and ESL centers, so which are going to be some members of his team. We have Kathy O'Dowd representing the healthcare component of the registration process. Debbie Peterson is with registration special needs children. So we are looking at trying to create a location where we can centrally register students, so that we can essentially have one-stop shopping for folks that are particularly in the district, where they can come, where they can not only bring all of the documents necessary to register their child, but also to determine whether or not assessments need to be done based on their English language, learner status, to determine whether they need special needs testing, to do a kindergarten assessment, skill assessment, that could be more meaningful than what we've done in the past for principals, we're trying to build a well-balanced kindergarten classes. So the task force is sort of split up into small groups. One is looking at the assessment issue, one is looking at the timeline and community outreach piece, how we advertise, how we try to get families to enroll in the summer earlier for the kindergarten kids, and also to get kids into the center for during the regular year. And then we're looking at the types of documentation that we need, and how to get that inputted into what is becoming a monster database for us, because there are so many reporting operations. So it's a, it's a big mission, and there's lots of work we've done in the greater world about centralizing the benefits of it. And it's a real tension between building administrators who would like to have everything happen in their schools, because there are so many elementary schools particularly. So we're, we're working really carefully with all of those stakeholders at the table. And our hope is that come December, January now, when we start advertising for kindergarten registration, that we will really have a much better system that's more centralized, and that we'll be able to provide a lot of services to families when they come in. So that's the work of our committee, hope to have something kind of more concrete for you December time, including a timeline, some protocols, kind of a flow chart of where people have to go and when, and how we're doing with that. But I think it's a, it's a big mission, but I think it will be there in the end.
Kelly, just have one question on, yeah.
Oh, will you be, is there, is there some discussion as to how long you will be open for registration, for instance? I know that schools close at four o'clock, and the offices close, but that's certainly not very helpful to working parents, so.
Yes, absolutely. And that's one of the things that this committee is going to look at for the PR and outreach piece, because we do know that's an issue. You know, I will say, the group that has been very effective in getting kids registered and providing multiple timeframes has been the ESL Center. They have a very fine job operation, and we're really kind of going to try to replicate that for regular education, registration across the district. So, but that is one piece that they do. They do kind of open hours during the weekend, and then they pick a couple of nights when they're open. And they work largely by appointment for the night time, which works for them, you know.
Several pros and cons for the centralization. Can certainly be considered, one of the things I learned very much last year working on the schools and certain projects I was working on, was I took for granted that everybody could meet at a specific places. For example, people work, I always assumed that, oh, they can be pretty good work, the world becomes people work. Well, a lot of people never don't know people work, or at least, and also people don't have, which again, they need to do a transportation without a car or not. So it's just something to reach out to, consider that there are pockets of populations in the area that may not have the ability to get there from transportation, but to take that into account.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a really good suggestion. And one of the things that we've been looking at is, once we get a real definitive protocol in place, whether we could perhaps use the mobile van that, the little Winnebago, the literacy van that Anne Mead has, whether we might be able to harness that as another way to move around to try to get registration. And this is really, a lot of this is really driven by our need to have kids registered and data in very much earlier than we've done. The buses start to get built in July at the latest, and now that we've moved to all-day kindergarten across the district, there's very little incentive for people to come early to register. Lots of families are waiting until July or August. And that's just simply too late in our district ownership to get everybody put in and, and to get the, really just the volume of data that needs to get put into Power School, and it needs to get put in consistently and accurately by whoever's touching it, because it just is too timely for them to go back in with the changes once everybody's in. So that's, it's driven by those two things, but your point is very well taken, that our hope is we'll be able to mobilize a little bit more from the city.
I was just thinking also, some of the daycares, if there was, I know as a working mom, if you met me, or if you had a registration night, maybe at the daycare, it might be easier and helpful, and possibly you'd get your numbers a lot sooner, because, you know, then I can have to come find you. Yeah, and they.
It's a great thing. Thank you.
The other thing that, oh, go ahead, Ken.
I was just going to ask you, we have other school districts that are larger than we are, like for instance, Bridgeport, do we have anything that we can emulate from them?
I think that what we have, the part of what we have are pretty good, they just need to be more uniformified. And to be honest, one of the people on this committee is doing Yoma's work, is Gina Jasson, who is our IT data person. And again, when I, when I say it's driven by our need to have consistent data that we can report to the state, she now has had a couple of years here to really look and say, this is not good enough what we have here, this is what needs to get fixed. So I think that we're in the process of building a pretty good mousetrap, but we've been driven by our specific needs because of the data. And so Gina's really been, I think, pretty perfectly poised to be able to give us some really good feedback. So, and I know she is, she participates in a lot of regional meetings because she's in contact with the people holding her position in other cities.
Anybody else?
Just to note, it's kind of disconcerting if you move into town and you have an elementary student, a high school student, and a middle school student. You can't register your elementary students until a secretary has come back. So one of the motivators for us to do this, started a few years ago, was the parents' convenience, because they can come in and register, you know, with some evening hours, you know, instead of waiting till the secretaries got back. It seems like a small thing, but it's a big thing, because when the secretaries get back, there's so much to do. Then we have to backlog, and then it's the kid, why can't the kids start? Well, then that was down on record. Well, you know how long it takes to get, get in the point for the physical, get in the organization. If we can get this going, that's why we started the program. What Kim didn't say is that she's got to look at the resources. Part of keeping this thing open, our hope is that you could register your middle school kids and your, I'm sorry, your K five students at the center. Middle school can go to middle school, high school can go there. She's really looking at resources to keep it open. That's the other thing that we have to do, you know. And, you know, Bridgeport and some of the others, actually, Augusto worked there and brought the idea over about the centralized ELL program. So he built that, was part of it, and now we're trying to build on his work, which is open all summer. And so, you know, I think together, if we can find some resources within the budget to do it, we can be open for parents in the evening, during the day, so we can get an extra before school starts.
And some of those districts actually do find a central register, and they have a person who is responsible for them, and we just have not been able to get there. So we're going to inch as close as we can to ideal and see if we can run a little bit more smoothly this year, continue a little bit.
I just want to thank the PTO presidents for hosting our evening. Canons, if you go to our website, it's plain, right? It's on there, and we're also trying to have a translator, by the way, they're working on that for parents, so they have a Google program, they might do that, so that'll be interesting to see if that works. So I thank you for doing that. It was a pretty good night. Central office review and responsibilities. A few years ago, we reorganized, we were forced to reorganize because of resources or lack of, so we did. But we are, we are challenged with our teacher evaluation system, the current review process. So rather for us to do it, I think we're too close to it, quite frankly. The group, you may recall, came in last year, Bill was the name of it.
Make a set for educational reform.
Okay. They, they are contracted through the, through the state to give some time to line sisters. We, Jeffrey, the CEO, we applied through them last year, they came into the study of our, of our technology work. Now they, we've applied for central office, they accepted us last week. They're going to have a consultant come in and work with us to review the roles and responsibilities, are really able to do the work that we have to do. Everybody's stretched, no doubt, but at this point, we just not getting evaluations done directly or in timely way, they've created a lot of challenges. The curriculum that we need to write, we're paying people to write it anyway during the summer, so I charge them to come in and take a look at our, our roles and responsibility. You were at meetings, Tabasek, we talked about the teacher evaluation system, and we're dealing with student learning objectives and how to determine growth, how to look into teacher's accountability, which is very geared teachers, because it does encapsulate employability, because of the way the law has been written with assessment. So we want to make sure the work that we do is diligent well. We need more time for people to be here to work and to do this kind of work. So hopefully this group can come in and really give us a laser, like, I didn't ask them to do it, all of the administration, just central office, focus on that one thing, and see if we could, I know we can operate more efficiently and effectively, but my guess is going to create some extended roles and possibly some positions. But this is the right time to do it with the budget coming up. I handed you something that I just received, Joe talked about, when you looked at the budget, he said, we don't, you know, there's an amount of money we know we're going to get, but we don't know if it has arrived yet. Well, pointing to the governor, it may never arrive. He's a bit optimistic. We met two, three weeks ago at the legislature, and I sent him that letter today, asking him, please don't react on any of the educational funding. I can't imagine what will happen if our Alliance Grant is cut 10%, 15%, because the funds of that money is all in salaries for us. And as you know, 50% of it, or 51% is supposed to be for new, that new is generally faculty. The other 49% of it is operational, as you're fully kindergarten, there are a lot of programs in there that just are day by day work. So I'm really concerned about what's going to happen. And I talked to the mayor, and they tried to meet with the governor in, as they're looking at the cuts, but apparently their, their OCM, was it OCM or CCM?
CCM.
They were not invited into the conversation, right? Is the way I understand, so we don't know what's going to come out of it. So, you know, I did write the legislature, I implore you to write your legislature and tell them, you know, if you're going to make cuts, they ought to think about making them for next year. Now, I'm concerned about it. I think you're anything else, so I'll keep you informed as soon as I hear something. Does anybody have any, Bill, any? Kim?
Yeah, Kim and Joe, we're talking.
Thank you.
Until the way they're sitting, okay. Thank you, everybody. Okay, it's my turn. All I have to talk about is the dinner, it's the second of, of December. It's Wednesday night, the second, and it's going to be in the media center at Danbury High School. But we'll start at six o'clock, um, our website, we'll start at five-thirty in the media center. All right, that's our annual meeting, that's what we're talking about, even annual meeting. And we have our pictures taken, and we have our electioneering officers, and then we proceed to the, to have dinner in the cafe, all right? I don't want to remind anybody in the room that Tuesday's election day, everybody go out to vote, please, it's very, very important.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, Mr. Paul.
Joe, just, one issue which came up the last board event meeting was the, the busing issue on Birch. Was that resolved, I could ask?
We did review that stop, Melly, we're going through it now. I drove it, actually, last week. We didn't make any ruling official, there is a letter being drafted now related to it. I don't see there's a change at this point. It's, it's a pretty safe passage out there, at least from what we reviewed with bus companies, so don't change.
All righty, um, okay. All right, I was just going to go, I was going to go and speak about our committees. Does anybody have any reports from the district committees that they're on? Ralph? No? Michael?
No.
Bob, or David?
No.
And the list, if they still have it in there.
They had, TDEC had a, a meeting and all, and we were presented with, I guess, the budget carry, the fifty-one, forty-nine percent, how it was going to be used, and an update of what Dr. South said, and he pretty much said it, that, that there's a subcommittee of being, of working on teacher evaluation. There seems to have been a problem of the fact that people were scoring very high on the classroom management aspects, that they're four or five in categories, and then their SLS, their student learning objectives maybe were, they were not achieving that. And I, I gather, my understanding is that this is one of the big problems, and that's what's, what they're working on very, right now, because that discrepancy should not, in my mind, should not exist, should not exist as much as it was. I could see some. And it's something that will take time, but I think if that, this is my personal observation, okay? It's been important in years, that if they can put this thing together and mesh them, I think one of the major problems of the teacher evaluation will be solved. I think people are very edgy that, that there's a feeling that they're doing their best in the classroom, a number of people, and yet, the results are not coming out the way. And, you know, so I think for morale purposes and everything, whatever this subcommittee comes up with, I'm not going to be around, I wish them the best of luck, because I think if they solve the problem, we'll go home, all the teachers.
I hope so.
We, I asked for the cause group, because it's not just a need to get, to meet together, and we just talked today, on December fourth, we're bringing all the large city urbans in. This is the one topic, we're going to bring, bring a team of folks to talk about, how do you measure growth, and how do you look at these, these slows? You know, all of us are faced with closing the gap, I mean, that's what it's about. So how do you move that achievement level? How do you close the gap? But how do you compare to teachers in terms of the interventions and the resources, the capacity? Deal with students that are chronically absent, deal with students who are latecomers and haven't been to school? So, you know, we're trying to look at that while we keep the eye on closing again. It's not an easy task, it really isn't an easy task. So we're hoping that, you know, between the thirteen, fourteen districts, we can start talking about how you measure growth and how are you doing, because what's happening, different districts, the guidelines from the state, very vague, very vague. Reasonable growth, they, they talk about, then you try to define what that means, you really can't define it. You go, and then a piece of the document says a year's growth. Well, you know, in some cases, a year's growth's not enough, and in some years, if the students are advanced, they can't quite get a year's growth, you know, whatever you do. So it gets all over the place, and we were hoping together, we can come up with some, some solutions that we can try for this year either. Because it is creating a lot of angst, a lot of anxiety, and a lot of talk, a lot of morale issues, I will tell you that. You know, and we're not happy about, none of us wanted to go down this route, so we're trying to work it out as best we can. That's what's up.
All right, I need a scheduling of, on the policy committee, you said, not policy, I'm sorry, that was very wrong.
Sites and facilities.
Sites and facilities, thank you. Sites and facilities. And now we have license for the thing.
I throw Monday out there, folks can do that.
We can throw Monday out there, but.
I know, it's before election, then.
What time would you like to have?
Four o'clock? Four, five, six, I could.
Can we do four-thirty? Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
I think you four-thirty. Phyllis?
Yes.
Four-thirty.
Ross.
Parent-teacher conferences.
Parent-teacher conferences, that's the, that's the evening.
And so you have Monday with your son?
I do Wednesday.
My daughter.
Your daughter.
I do Wednesday.
Joe, the agenda's going to talk about the summer work.
Summer work.
And, and also the allocation.
Get the money, yeah.
Yeah.
It's really important, because that, we need to turn, to an application in or a list.
Correct. We also have, just so the board knows, we have a, we go up to the state for kind of a preview on the high school project on the tenth.
So we dragged everybody there, so we have some direction.
So Wednesday, better for you? Wednesday for you? Maybe four-thirty, we're keeping it at four-thirty. Phyllis?
Um, no, I can't do Wednesday, but that's okay.
It's okay. You can do Wednesday.
I'll find it.
Wednesday. Yeah. Four-thirty, you have four-thirty on Wednesday? What's the, what's the date?
The twenty-eighth.
No.
Next Wednesday? Oh, that's this one, that's the, that's the.
Wednesday the twenty-eighth is today.
The twenty-fourth, I know. November the twentieth minute, I figured that out. All right, and community relations, Richard, I need, I'm reading.
Yeah, I'd like to schedule a meeting and throw out, you know, coordinate with you and Debbie, some dates to, to meet quickly, basically in November, to discuss two topics. One is the ECS funding issue that we had a presentation last week on. South is only to invite those people that attended there, who signed up, to say they do want to work with us. And the other thing is, this particular program, saying hello, and such and such. The other thing is, I'd like to do something, again in November, with the finance committee to basically start discussions relative to long-range, at least the, the long-range projection, as well as some of the topics we want to touch upon for the current year's budget.
Okay, um, administration asked that we, our meeting be as soon as possible, so I'm going to suggest next Wednesday, that we just booked for sites and facilities.
Yeah, the only thing, I look, unfortunately, my calendar, my card, but I would have to, pretty booked up next week, so what I'd like to do is to be able to get back to you, do you want to set the date, and I'll just let you know, or could you just give me until tonight?
Wednesday night is not good for you, next Wednesday? So we can.
I, I don't know, I'm pretty much.
Because it's the only one that you really have, three, so that's fine.
Well, we can do it during the week, so I mean, we don't have to limit things to the week, say, as far as I'm concerned.
For the finance, please?
No, that's the, um, we need to.
Community relations would be two things. One, I work out what's out, because there are more people involved, that we want, one, one meeting for that, and then the other meeting for the say hello, would be, would be a separate one, rather than to do it all in one meeting, because there would be too many people there. And one group doesn't really have any people to do with the other, okay, in terms of participants. So if it's okay with you, I'd love to get back to you throughout some dates, the members of the community relations, I think we may not do that. Has the same with the finance committee, that's okay. And what I'll thought, or not thought, but I mentioned, is that the Danbury Youth Service at this location on November ninth, from four to six P.M., is having a, an ice cream social, for the benefit of introducing parents to the different resources in, in Danbury. And one of the things we've been finding out, there are a lot of Danbury parents, new people coming into the community, that don't have any idea as to what resources are offered in the city of Danbury. So during that particular time period, they have eighteen different agencies that will be represented, people who have tables there, going from Danbury Children's Families, to Connecticut Leaving Services, Connecticut Institute for Communities, Families Network of Western Connecticut, RNC, et cetera, et cetera. So what I'd like to do is see if doctors, and there were flyers, both in Spanish and in English, announcing this, if, discuss with Dr. South, is a way that maybe the schools can get this internally and promote it vocally, or if you can put it on the website. But I think, over the course of the years, one of the things that's come back to us is that people don't really understand what resources we have here. Eileen and I were working on something last year, going to Brookfield, because they have a particular project that we were very excited about, bringing it back to Danbury, and lo and behold, we found out that Danbury had specifically that particular project here, they just weren't well organized. So even as far as we're concerned, there's a lot of good things that are happening in Danbury, but just not well publicized, so that we can get it all in one.
So this, this, what, what is the date of that?
November ninth.
So that is the.
And from four to six at this school. And it's an ice cream social. Don't know whether you missed the vote on that route, but I didn't have anything to deal with it.
I wouldn't donate it.
I'm not part of it, you know, I'm just a, I'm sorry, it's called Local Inter-Agency Service Team.
List.
List, exactly. So it's a worthwhile thing, and the more we get information out to parents as to what we offer here, I, I think, you know, we're doing a good job in that, in that sense, to the community.
Okay, anybody else, anybody else have anything? All right, I, well, I can have something before you all leave. If you'll see, we all have nugs sitting in our positions at the table. It's going to sound really silly to you all. This is like a present for us, this is like very, very exciting, and I want to thank staff that dropped this here from West Side. Where's Frank?
He, yeah, he took it in. He wore a lot of his leather with him.
People that come here, just tell them that, say thank you very much, it was very nice. It says, thank you for joining us at West Side for all this time. I'm very excited. So I give a motion to go into a second session, please, someone. Um, so I thank you all for coming, we'd say that means that I got to go, and I know it's going to hurt you, you know, yeah.